Good evening. Thank all of you for being here tonight. This is our first meeting of the month of December, December the 6th, 2022. Thank all of you again for being here. The thought for the day is, a man must be big enough to admit his mistakes, smart enough to provide, to profit from them, and strong enough to correct them. This is John C. Maxwell. I'm going to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask tonight if Commissioner Henderson, if you would, lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Cowan, if you would, lead us in our pledge tonight.
Chairman, well, everyone bow their heads. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just come with thanksgiving in our heart. We come just thanking for all that you have done for us in our lives and all that you will do for us in the future in our lives. We thank you for looking down on Newton County and just actually shaping the way and molding the way that you have us to go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I think there was an email that came through. One young lady wanted to be removed off of the, I think it was Commissioner Henderson, District 4. She wanted to be removed off of the reappointment list. I'm sorry? Is I read off? Okay. This is updated agenda? Okay. I'm sorry. I don't have any, I don't have any change there. Yep. I do, I seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Over.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you.
Chairman, good evening. The first item that we have on the agenda this evening is item number five. It's the public hearing. Notice of proposed county right-of-way abandonment, Bailey Drive and Lakeside Drive. Is Mr. Chester here, Clay?
Okay. Patrick, please. Thank you.
Chester's not here. I can walk you through it. So, Board made a recall at the last meeting, it was actually two meetings ago. Mr. Clay made a presentation about a partial abandonment of Bailey Drive and Lakeside Drive, which were two roads that have been out of service for quite some time. The Board authorized at that time what we call a step one of phase one of the road abandonment. And it's here tonight for you to consider phase two of the road abandonment, which it requires a public hearing and the PIO to actually make the road. You've got the full size of a very large survey of your stations and the two portions to be abandoned, or those two portions kind of on the bottom, which is the bottom of the Bailey, bottom of Bailey Drive, bottom of Lakeside Drive. So, they're both, both of those little, very small intended sections. And the law requires us to open a public hearing, hear from any residents, and then after we have the public hearing, vote a resumption.
Thank you, sir. At this time, it's 7:07. We're going to go ahead and open it up now for our public hearing. The applicant is the county. We allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak in favor. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address, for the record, please. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose? Anyone would like to oppose? Anyone would like to oppose? Thank you so much. That portion of our public hearing is closed.
So, the, so the next item is the resolution of the Board of Commissioners declaring those two portions of Lakeside Drive and Bailey Drive to be surplus and formally abandoned, then so that they will no longer be compromised. And they will also authorize the disposition of these little strips of the road.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. I seek a motion, please. Bailey Drive and Lakeside Drive, I think, I think they, if I'm not mistaken, Bailey Drive, I think it's Commissioner Henderson, District, sorry, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, thank you. I make a motion to approve as stated by the County Attorney.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Sir.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you so much.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is citizen comments for the items that are on the agenda.
Thank you. This opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only, agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You may come at this time. You may come at this time. Thank you so much.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda that we have, if there is no Chairman's report this evening?
There's no Chairman's report. It's a long night tonight, so I'm going to go directly to the County Manager Report.
Mr. Chairman, we will also be brief in consideration of our agenda tonight. For our month of November, we're going to report out the departments. For animal services, we had 68 pet adoptions in the month of November. Intake remains the same by 24. Intake remains 25% higher than last year. Animal and human bites has increased 17%. We responded to 261 requests for service in November. Our building services, this is also the department we highlight tonight. We placed green lights to eliminate the destruction building to support Veterans Day in November 13th through the 18th. The media moved here as under construction. They also completed quarter facility inspections on our different facilities such as Cousins Community, Van Rom, Nelson Heights Community Center, Gum Creek, Mansfield, Washington Street, and Almond Community Center. They also responded to 154 maintenance-related calls in the month of November with a 100% resolved rate. Our EMA, they conducted additional testing for severe weather alerts in preparation of Hurricane N. Current code, red registration numbers as of 11/25/2022, and all these numbers are year-to-date. Business 339, residents 1401, cell phone 1561. Our notifications via text, 1500 notifications, email, over 450, and weather warnings, 995. For extension offices, 1,000 students met in monthly club meetings in 10 public schools and three private schools in Newton County. 4H Club, my six students attended. 4H Literacy Day Festival, we reached over 125 students. Extension office received second place poster for Adult Food 101 at the annual conference and also at the Conference Georgia Association of County Agriculture State Conference. I'd like to recognize our 4H 2002 outstanding award recipient as well as first place for their poster. Finance Department, they are in the process of working on our fiscal year 2022 audit. Processed 2028 invoices, they issued over 680 account's pay over checks totaling over $8 million. Processed 22 purchase orders, processed over 1,500 payroll checks totaling over $3.4 million and deposited $20.4 million in revenue. Fire Services, 8,125 Newton County students were educated on fire safety programs in the month of November. They also had nine fall festivals and local events. Approximately 3,000 citizens were educated on holiday fire safety. Also for Fire Services, just some highlights, some of the numbers. For the month of November, 26 fires, 282 rescues and EMS calls, 14 hazardous conditions called, 29 service calls, 87 intent calls, 38 false alarms and false calls, and one special emergency call with a total of 100% response rate. GIS, they processed 12 MAP requests. They had over eight requests for GIS data we received this month, and they assisted with the update of our website. HR, they onboarded 13 across various departments. They onboarded four employees across various departments, as well as we'd like to recognize our employees for celebrating five to 35 years of service. We have an award today, outstanding event for our employees, and I think that definitely deserves a pause for our employees here. We processed annual leave back, and we also coordinated our CPR training for 16 employees. Information Services, they're continuing with their training as far as ensuring we have a secure network. They also responded to 174 support tickets, and they continue with the deployment of the multi-factor authorization for email. They also have the fourth virtual server in mind, just known to support the GIS environment. Juvenile court, 64 delictus complaints, service, 30 walk-ins and certified families in our new truancy court program. They also, our judges, you know, first semi-annual truancy SASC state program. Defender's Office represented clients in 12 court calendar dates. Assisted public defenders represented clients in jury trials in two trial weeks, and our public defender's office welcomed two new employees. Parks and Recreation, basketball season started this November. We also had a fall festival. We had 100 vendors, 15 food vendors. We also, Turner Lake will have Santa Claus from December the 10th from 6 to 8 o'clock, and we had over 14,000 visit Turner Lake. Nelson Heights Pavilion construction also started. PIO continued with their website presence, 317 website updates. Now, Facebook reached over 58,000 people in the month of November, a 42% increase from October. And we also are continuing with our upgrades here in our board. Public Works, they completed splot resurfacing on Channing Coke Road. They completed splot packaging on Channing Drive, and they also collected over 3,700 bags of trash in November, and the Sheriff's Office assisted with 559 bags of trash. Senior Services have a total of 28 new registrants, 20 new members and eight renewals. Also, the senior services will be closed December the 19th through January the 6th. Staff will work up to December 21st and will return on the 3rd. And we're also hiring 27 senior services, administrative specialists, and cooks. Solidways, they are continuing to do good out there as far as developing safety and operational improvements. As far as the landfill sites, they all were emoted and maintained for the month of November, as well as the new tags totaling over 5,327, replacement tags 17, a total of dispatch tags of 5,019. Transportation, we have some projects actually tonight. Received bids on Jack Neely and Kirkland Roundabout Construction, that's here tonight. Received bids on the resurfacing project that's also here tonight. And we also acquired the R.O.D. repurses on these, right away for Crow Road. That concludes for our monthly report. And I also just wanted to briefly highlight, we mentioned in the previous meeting, we highlighted various parts with a short video. We want to show a short video on building services.
Building Services provides all aspects of building maintenance for county facilities through either in-house staff or outside vendors. Most of the building maintenance requests go through our office. In our office, we work with order documentation to monitor pricing, expedite service, and give better accountability for services rendered. In addition to facilities maintenance, our department also provides custodial services and cleaning services to many county facilities. We provide safe, clean, comfortable, and functional facilities for citizens to conduct their business. Customers of Facility Maintenance Department include Newton County staff, employees, special event functions, and people that directly support the citizens and businesses of Newton County. While we do not work with citizens directly, we support most other county departments so they can continue to provide services to our citizens. Currently, our staff is made up of one maintenance director, one maintenance supervisor, one maintenance tech, four full-time custodians, and four part-time custodians. We can be contacted through the county's website at the link below. We are involved behind the scenes with several community events, such as the lighting of the square, the Fourth of July celebration, the Christmas parade float, ribbon cuttings, building dedications, and family fun day.
The guys are doing a really great job. We have some great employees. You know, hey, we appreciate all the hard work that they put in. Thank you so much for all that you're doing. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, Commissioner Henderson, he has a question. Go ahead, sir.
It's just brief. I just know, I noticed that it's been the cold months, and typically when it's talking cold, the fire department gives out smoke detectors to homes, and I was just hoping this year that we could kind of work with, at the same time, city covering all of fire department within the county, and give them all at the same time, sort of, in hopes that everyone, that we can protect them. Because not all, every year, but every other year, there'd be some people who get a fire, home catch on fire, and it kind of kills somebody. We don't, we were thinking about that, and we still want that to happen if and where possible. So, we do know that smoke detectors, smoke detectors save lives, and I think this would be a good time for our fire department, all working together, and we could save somebody alive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a quick question in regards to the hardship tags, because I know we have some seniors that need assistance. What does that include, and what's requirements for the hardship tag or solid waste? Anybody?
They can, they can, they can either come downstairs and go online, or either go online and apply for it. There's, I think there's a list downstairs, other things that they can, that would qualify them, qualify them. I mean, we've been doing it, I think, for about three years, four years now. I think there's a good many of people that has already qualified, so, yeah. Anybody else? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is number 11, our consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. I do want to recognize, I don't think she's here tonight, but Ms. Victoria Redding, she will be the new zoning and appeals placement for District 3. I'm not sure if you're here tonight, but we want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you for serving your community, and we greatly appreciate you. And if we can do anything for you, please don't hesitate to let us know. Commissioners, with that being said, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please.
Over. Sir.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussions? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you so much.
Chairman Maynes, the next item that we have on the agenda is item number 12. Office of the District Attorney is requesting approval for joint funding for gang and/or violent crime prosecutor. The presenter is our District Attorney, Mr. Randy McGinley.
Thank you for being here tonight, sir. We are asking everyone to stand behind that podium tonight. We hope you guys are appreciating the decorations of the courthouse. I think they are wonderful tonight. Yeah.
I don't know, y'all probably agree the DA has yet another PowerPoint. But I appreciate y'all having me, Chairman and Commissioners. You know, I provided a sort of written summary, but this is just some additional information as far as what I'm asking for, in the sort of genesis behind this. And I know I've come to y'all before talking about some gang and gun crimes here in the county, and I talked to some other DAs and some things they've done, and the Coweta Circuit, which is Carroll County, Troop County, Coweta, which is like Newton and LaGrange. And I bring that up one because they've done what I'm sort of asking for, a little more extreme than what I'm asking for, but also because they're sort of in a unique situation, maybe five, 10 years ahead of us, because they, a lot of, they had a lot of growth over the last five, 10 years, because the Kia plant went there, which, you know, we may be having something similar to that here. But a few years ago, LaGrange had just a series of shootings, and the Chief of Police, actually, is the one who approached the DA and said, hey, why don't we ask maybe the city to chip in some funding for the DA's office in regards to gun and gang crimes? And so, with that, and I mean, LaGrange ships in like, they, I think, like $100,000 a year. I'm not asking that from the cities or even y'all. But what I'm essentially doing is asking for this $30,000, that'll be this current fiscal year, from Newton County, Walton County, Covington, Monroe. Now, Monroe will be a little bit interesting, because they have a fiscal year starting January 1st, so it's a little bit different. Covington already approved. Sorry, I kind of mixed my PowerPoint between here and Newton a second here. I went to Walton already today, and they approved, their Board of Commissioners meeting starts at 6:00. They already approved this as well. Covington and Walton have already proved it. Monroe has their city council meeting next week. And obviously, Covington and Walton's approval is subject to all four entities approving it. And the idea is to have a prosecutor that goes back and forth between Walton and Newton County, that has the ability to go between the counties, to focus on gun and gang crime, especially multi-co-defendant cases. When we have cases that have, sometimes we have a shooting case up in Walton County, armed robbery, shooting, that has nine co-defendants. And a nine co-defendant case is going to take more time from our office than probably 20 individual, single defendant cases. Give you some examples of some of the things, some of y'all may have heard the news, the Atlanta, or Fulton County DA, the YSL, which is a blood gang, Big Rico indictment that was announced. One of those people that's actually named that indictment is already pled guilty to gang activity here in Newton County. And I know we've talked before, we've gone in front of the city council, Covington, just the number of drive-by shootings that we had, and how that continues to grow. Some examples of some of these big cases, just so you can see what we're dealing with, is that is just picture of all the Facebook records for one individual case. And so, when we sometimes are able to have probable cause to issue a search warrant to Facebook and get Facebook records, it's 50,000, 60,000 pages for multiple, multiple co-defendant cases. It's just, it's a lot of work. This right here is a board involving, I guess that's five separate shootings, all involving, there's a lot of blacked-out parts, because some of this is pending, so I don't want to get into a lot of that in a public meeting, but five separate shootings that are all tied together. Some of the same victims are then shooting at the people who shot at them, things like that. This is just another example of, I just right-clicked on a file folder for one individual case with four co-defendants, and you'll see that the size, which is the discovery, the amount of data we have on that single case is 144 gigs of data for one case. And that's just excessive. And the idea behind this is that gangs and guns don't stay in one city or county. They go across things. We have a, for example, an armed robbery, Agassal case in Walton County, where one of the defendants was Granton Bond. He was on an ankle monitor, and he's now charged with murder in Barrow County. That's all gang-related as well. There's one specific gun that's been used, we send a lot of, we being law enforcement as well, when they, when they collect shell casings and projectiles, they're sent to the ATF to analyze. And we had, one gun was used in drive-by shootings in Monroe, Walton, and Covington. And so, it's just kind of showing that these are things that don't just stay in small areas. The crime is something that crosses a lot of borders. And I know Commissioner Henderson previously had brought up, you know, working together with all the agencies, and that's why I bring this next slide, is that, and the sheriff was here, was really instrumental in this, was putting together the DA's office, Walton Sheriff's Office, Monroe, Social Circle, Newton Sheriff's Office, Covington, Porte de Oxford, and Loganville as well, which I accidentally forgot, forgot here. I think he came in front of you guys, the sheriff did, a month or so ago, asking for y'all to agree to basically write a check for $100,000 that will be reimbursed by GMA, like a Homeland Security grant for a gang, for gang tracking software. And so, that's something that will be reimbursed, and we're already in the process with that company of how that software is going to work and how all the different agencies are going to have access to it. And it's going to be a circuit-wide thing, because again, these are defendants and crimes that go across borders. And we have buy-ins from all, it's a really terrible spelling on there, I apologize, from both counties, the entire circuits, from all the agencies. I put this on there, this is just showing that Covington, before tonight, a couple weeks ago, had approved this, and their language was similar to what I've said here, is that it needs to be contingent upon all four entities agreeing to this. Breaking down what exactly I'm looking for, for FY '23, and the remainder of FY '23, again, is $30,000 from each entity. That will cover the cost of a vehicle, also cover the cost of equipment supplies, training and gas, and employee costs. And that's something that I've gotten from Brittany. She, and I'll explain that here a little bit more in a second. And so, that came out, I think, to a total of like $118,000, which I rounded up to 120 to, divided by four would be $30,000 per entity. Obviously, I know it's not something you're voting on today, but the idea is in future years, and I'll include it in next year's budget, FY '24, would be to continue this. Now, obviously, the cost would go down because the vehicle, we wouldn't need to pay for another vehicle next year, but the employee costs go up because it would pay for an entire year for that person. But it'd be about $25,000 per entity in future years. One note about the employee costs, my, if this is approved by all four entities, I have an individual who has experience, she's handled gang cases, she's handled murder cases, sex cases. She just tried a 21-count rape aggravated child mole station trial last week, and she's very familiar with both counties. Is not to reimburse and pay for her salary, because her salary would cost the entities more money, would be to fund a position that would be up to just step three of the ADA's grade, and bring in someone new with not as much experience, and that would just save the county money, to replace her position in a courtroom, and then allow that ADA to kind of go back and forth, as I've said. Because if it was funding her position, it would, it would cost the county, city, way more money, and the cities as well. It would handle both gang and gun crimes in both counties, and that wouldn't just be a simple possession of a firearm, it'd be, you know, use, use of firearm, things like that. But for you guys in the cities, part of the job would also be to maintain lists of what cases she worked on, where those cases came from, what agencies they were from, things like that, that we can report back to you to show what that money's being used for. Because what I would want to do is specifically earmark this money for this purpose. If it's not spent, then it either goes back to the entities, or it is rolled over to the next year. And so, it's not something that would be, just something I could just use somewhere else in my budget. It would be specifically, specifically, struggling with that word today, for those costs. God, I held myself there. And another thing that, that I want the position to do is also work with the schools and SROs, because obviously, there is some issues of gang activity in some of the schools. So, I'll finish it up here. And I would say, just, you know, to add on to that, I think some of the savings we've done for the county budget is we've had, you know, some ARPA money, we had another position agree from state, state ARPA money. The investigative assistant position has been funded for all of calendar year '23. The investigative assistant position has been funded for all of calendar year '23, so we don't need to ask that from you guys. The consent agenda had another $120,000 of VOCA grant money. And so I'd ask that y'all approve this contingent upon, I guess at this point it would just be Monroe agreeing to do it next week, or next week. So if y'all have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Guys, y'all have any, we need to get into zoning, this is actually after 7:30. Do y'all have any questions? You do.
I think while we have questions, and this is a subject that we need to, really need to address. Because the District Attorney, he's right, the gangs are in the schools.
Let me ask this, let me ask this, Commissioner, can, can you?
I don't want to stick around, I'm sticking around if you need me to, if you need to do something else, I can come back.
Well, I think, let me say this, and I'll be quiet. I think the public need to know that there are drug sales in our schools, that out of 159 counties of the state of Georgia, every county got gangs in it. And we were trying to get a, behind the curtain with Sheriff Brown, and nobody paid him any attention. And this is where we're at now, it's going to get worse. Thank you.
I'll stick around, Chairman, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just let me know when you come back up.
Alright, thanks. It is actually 7:33, we want to run into zoning quickly. Ms. Apple, Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on up.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
Good evening.
Our first case this evening, it's actually old business, so it's MOD 22-000002. And if you remember, this was a modification request that came before the board in October. And it actually was tabled by the board so that the applicant can gather more information from the community. Today, an applicant is requesting that it be deferred until the January 17th BOC meeting. It's just to give them an opportunity to meet with citizens and get information requested by the board.
Thank you. Commissioner, can you make that motion, please? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, I will definitely make that motion. This is zoning that I think, that particular, he and I was somewhat chairing, the chairman had, I think your daughter was sick, or some, some similar, I just don't remember the entire circumstances. And what the commissioner, just two commissioners, DeMond and Commissioner Sanders, just three commissioners, what we all agreed upon was to have a meeting where the citizens could come out and kind of voice their concerns from, from telling the truth. And so this would be the meeting that we would set up. I don't know what I'm asking Patrick, is can all three of us be there, or does it just need you two?
So, are you asking about community?
They acted withdrawal.
Right, but he's asked me a question about community. You should avoid a call, the three of you there.
So I think either Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Mason, either one should maybe not come, whichever one y'all choose, so we can have that meeting for all three of the districts, with anybody who may be concerned in this. Having said that, make a motion. And your motion was, that you want me to make was for it to, for it to be taped?
To be deferred until the January 7th BOC, sir.
It stated, it stated by, it stated by a plan director, make that motion.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Our second case this evening is a rezoning. It is REZ 22-000016, located at Snapping Shoals Road and Highway 212. Combined, the two parcels combined are 10.8 acres. Tax ID numbers are 19-13 and 19-13B. The existing land use map, which was approved previously, last month, is commercial and PRC, which is parks, recreation, conservation. The current zoning is agricultural residential. The proposed zoning is highway commercial. It's in the South River watershed in District 1. And the owner and the petitioner are Denise and Clifton Jones. And just a brief history, the planning commission on September 27th, they recommended approval of the flume, which is a future land use map amendment, to change it over to commercial and PRC by a vote of 3-0. On 10/18, the Board of Commissioners approved the flume to go to commercial PRC. And on 11/29, the planning commission recommended approval of this rezoning to highway commercial by a vote of 4-0. And again, the applicant's intent is to rezon both parcels to highway commercial for a proposed commercial use. And the subject site, one tract is 1.8 acres, and the other is 2.11 acres, totaling 10.8 acres, located at Highway 212 and Snapping Shoals Road, currently zoned agricultural residential. Conclusion to findings, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed zone change request to highway commercial is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with zonings in the area. Recommended conditions, should this petition be recommended for approval, it should be approved highway commercial. Conditions subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, a minor plaque must be approved by Development Services to combine the two lots. B, a 75-foot buffer must be maintained along the southern and eastern boundary lines that are adjacent to AR zoning. And that would be parcels 19-10 and 32-6. C, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services, Transportation Department, and the Newton County Fire Marshal before any construction or development on the property. And D, permits must also be obtained from our external agencies, GDOT, the Water Authority, and Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, as applicable. So this is the location of the property at Highway 212 and Snapping Shoals Road. It's currently zoned agricultural residential. And we have some neighboring parcels that are already commercial, and then this is industrial at the bottom here. This is the flume that was recently approved, so it's commercial, and then a little bit of the parks, recreation, conservation on this side. And it mirrors the parcel above it. It's located in the South River watershed. And this is a survey that was presented to staff. And this is just a concept plan of the commercial use that they are proposing. And if there are any questions for staff, I believe the applicant is here.
Thank you, thank you much. It is 7:40, and we're going to open it up now for our public hearing. If you will, please utilize the microphone that's on the floor, please. For the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come at this time. If you would, please, sir. Ms., sir, if you would, please utilize.
I was just exiting.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow.
Alright.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Great, appreciate you. Good evening, thank you guys for being here.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Clifton Jones, I have with me the lovely Denise Jones. We reside at 2727 Old Salem Road in Conyers. And I also have with us our project manager, Shane Sealy.
I reside at 336 Person Street, Monticello, Georgia.
And Ms. Denise will be presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Clifton. Thank you all so much, I feel so grateful and fortunate we've made it this far. This is our, our fourth meeting, so we're very grateful to be here. I would be amiss to not thank Shayna and her team and just all of you for, this has been a long process, but hopefully it's all going to be worth it. So we're very excited about this project, this particular intersection, if you're familiar with it. It is right at Highway 81 and 212. There are no eatery, sit-down restaurants, or anything that anybody can get a sit-down meal, if you would, within 7.2 miles of that particular intersection. So there's nothing there at all, I think the closest place would be going back up to Conyers. Also, this particular intersection is already, as Shayna has already mentioned, surrounded by commercial and industrial property. There are two gas stations and a very high-volume Dollar General that sit right there on the corner. The third piece of this is there is traffic that is going to be fed into revenue for Newton County as the traffic that comes through there comes through Jasper, Rockdale, Newton, and Henry County. So a very highly-traveled area. I'm a bit of a, I don't want to, shouldn't probably use the word stalker, but I'm down there almost every day, really looking at the area and just making sure that we are looking at everything. We've been, this has been about a 10-month project that we've looked at. We've been investors for quite a long time, we're very passionate about it. And it is just, we looked at what would it, what do the demographics look like there? So we're looking at putting some type of brand there, an eatery that is, it's highly regarded. So if you would, something maybe like, maybe a Waffle House, maybe something else that would be affordable. So just wanted to mention that, it would be a restaurant that would be something affordable for that particular area. So that's all I have, and if it would be okay, if we can turn it over to Shane.
I have a couple things to comment. Across Snapping Shoals Road is zone manufacturing. You got the Dollar General there, across 212 is commercial. I just think it would be a good fit for the area, especially what they're planning on doing, putting eatery there, which is very much needed for a lot of construction going on that way. You got Henry County right there, and I just, I think it would be beneficial for the county.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow, allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on back up. And I think that's in District 1, Commissioner Edwards. Motion to approve is off, as long as I can get prior approval and formative. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve rezoning request REZ 22-000016.
Chairman, would that be with recommended conditions?
We stand with recommendations.
It's been motioned to approve by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passed five vote. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman. Our final case this evening is a conditional use permit. It is case number CUP 22-000006. It does have, it actually has two companion cases, it's a variance, VAR 22-000009, and a rezoning, REZ 22-000001, both of which were heard earlier this year. The proposed use is an accessory structure for a home-based business. It's located at 3231 Highway 212, it's on 5.9 acres. Tax ID number is 33-63C. Future land use is RR Rural Residential. Existing zoning is agricultural residential, also located in the South River watershed and in Commissioner District 1. And our owner and petitioner is Mr. Gerson Funes. On just brief history, on March 15th, the rezoning was approved by the Board of Commissioners. It was rezoned from mobile home subdivision to agricultural residential zoning. And August 25th, the variance was heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they approved the variance request to place the accessory structure for the home-based business in the front yard, and also to allow the structure to be no bigger than 1,800 square feet. And applicant's intent is to place a structure for his business in the front yard. And the subject site, as we said, is 5.9 acres, located off of Highway 212 and currently zoned AR. And there is a single-family residence on it. This is a section that relates to home occupation. It is in your staff reports, so I won't read through it unless there are any questions on it. It's about two pages, it goes all the way up to Section P. And conclusions, the applicant does have challenges due to the shape of the property and the location of the home when it was built more than 20 years ago, and it's all in the rear of the yard. The lot is long and narrow. The applicant was approved to rezon a property to AR. He was also approved to have a variance to allow the accessory structure for this business to be in the front yard, as well as have it exceed 1,000 square feet for his pool business. And staff recommends approval of the conditional use request to use the accessory structure for the home occupation or the home-based business with staff recommended conditions. And the recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for the home-based occupation subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, prior to any construction of the structure, the applicant must apply for and get approval for all required permits from Development Services, and this must include a detailed site plan of the project. B, the structure shall be no larger than 1,800 square feet. C, there shall be no customer contact on the property. The structure is for administrative and storage purposes. D, building plans submitted should include elevations of all sides in order to ensure the accessory structure meets architectural requirements. And E, the applicant shall adhere to all other requirements for Section 510-310, which covers the home occupation. And this is an aerial view of the parcel, so currently the house is located all the way down here. And I'm going to show you later on, he's proposing to put the structure in front. Currently zoned agricultural residential. Rural residential flume. South River. Commissioner District 1. And this is the proposed concept plan, so we've got the home here. And this is the proposed location of the accessory structure for the home-based business. And this is a rendering or a concept that the applicant has provided. And if there are any questions for staff.
Thank you, we're going to go ahead and open it up for the public hearing.
Okay.
This is approximately 7:50 right now. We're going to go ahead and open it up for our public hearing, the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have 10 minutes to do so, if you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come at this time.
Good evening, board. Appreciate the time and the effort that you guys are putting on in our county. And I'm here to present our permit that we're trying to get for our business. We've been in Noonan County for 20 years, and we decided that we couldn't find any more space, and I figured our acreage there that we have would be a good use for, for that purpose of our, having a building and having our things outside of the weather and exposed to the elements and to the eye of everybody. And that's the reason and the purpose of doing this application.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yeah, could you state your name again, please?
My name is Gerson Funes, and I'm at 3231 Highway 212.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? You may come. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Clifton Jones, 2727 Old Salem Road, Conyers. I just want to speak in favor for this gentleman. We spoke at the last meeting, and we talked about his idea, and I just want to support him. I think it'd be a great idea for him and his family to be able to store their equipment in this building.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Thank you, sir. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Would anyone like to oppose? Would anyone like to oppose? Would anyone like to oppose? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleby, if you would, please. I think this is also in District One, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit CUP 22-000006, with staff recommended.
Can I get a second, please? Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. While we're here, I'm going to go ahead and use Chairman's privilege tonight. Ms. Ham, would you please read in the minutes, 26 through 29, please?
Yes, Chairman. Alcohol beverage license, number 26. First reading, Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC, CVS Pharmacy, number 8419, 4192 Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, 30016. Licensee, Bastet Cross, District Three. Number 27 is the first reading, Family Dollar Stores of Georgia LLC and/or Family Dollar Store, number 31714, 3250 Highway 81, Covington, Georgia, 30016. Licensee, Joy Robinson, District Two. Number 28, first reading, Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC and/or CVS Pharmacy, number 1359, 5384 Highway 20, Covington, Georgia, 30016. Licensee, Misty Kite, District Two. Number 29, first reading, Walmart Stores East, number 4558, 4200 Salem Road. Licensee, Danielle Fournay, District Two.
Thank you so much. Those are the first readings. We're going to revert back now to item number 12. Mr. McGinnis, if you would, please come on back up. I think Commissioner Sanders had a question.
My question, I was looking at the numbers, and I agree with Commissioner Henderson. This is very much leading into protection for our youth in our school system and also in our residents in the county. But I just had a question with the figures. If all the municipalities don't agree, or if one happens to step out later on in the years, how would it be funded? So, that would be my question.
In the future, I think that'd be a hard question to answer. I would hope, especially with the municipalities, because that's, this is really something new for them. But, you know, I'm coming in passing, I mean, I had the chief of police was on board with it, and Chief Police Monroe's on board with it. Obviously, I haven't been there yet, so I don't know what the council would say to that. I would, I would say I would push hard to have all four entities always continue to say yes to this. I think it's a needed thing. I think, as Commissioner Henderson said, I think being involved in the schools is a good thing, too. One thing I'll add to that is the times that we've had some, we've worked with the feds and things to have some bigger gang investigations, one of the issues that I have seen is we arrest maybe 10 gang members, including some of the leadership, and you have then a vacuum. And if you don't have something to try to deal with that vacuum, there ends up being a lot of violence that tries to fill that vacuum. And so, that's why I think being involved in the schools is an important thing. The funding, you're right. I mean, it is contingent, and I think that's the best way to ask all four entities to say it's contingent on each entity doing it. If one all of a sudden backs out, I'd probably come in front of each of the other entities and say, hey, I think this is a good idea. I'd ask you to continue funding it and split it three ways instead of four. But I think as I get, you know, three entities on board, it's a little bit easier to go to the fourth one at that point. And I've had some questions before about some other, you know, there's some small cities like Porterdale, Oxford, there's just not the crime there to ask them to do it. Loganville is one that was brought up to me. We just, we don't have, you may read about some crime in Loganville. Loganville is one of those weird cities where it's in Gwinnett and Walton. Most of the violent crimes on the Gwinnett side. But I just didn't think it was worth asking them because of the amount of crime and violent crime we get there. And also Walton, Newton, Monroe, and Covington, a lot of the gang gun activity is done by individuals that reside there as well. Loganville seems to be some people coming in from Lawrenceville and Gwinnett into the, and that's why I did not include them in this request. But if that changes, obviously, and some other cities grow, I would do that.
Thank you much. Any more questions, guys? Commissioner Henderson?
So, in the, in what you're talking, what is the preventative measure as far as trying to keep the kids? And this, I think basically, how they're recruiting is those young kids at the middle school. And, you know, they say, well, when you don't put them in a football team, when you don't put them on a basketball team, then the gangs have the opportunity to come in and be like another parent, say, well, hey, we're going to give you something fun to do. And they participate with the gangs. And when you keep the kids out of school, and guess what? They lean on the gangs, they start doing illegal activities and stuff such as well. Only thing where I'm crying to say is it's going to take up an effort by all of us, not just the one, when you, when you say you don't want to put, you chose a family $125 per child, I said, to play football, that's one I know pretty good in Newton County. And they can't pay it, then the child or the teenager rely on the gang. They start doing gang activities. If you don't put the girl in the basketball team, which costs a certain amount of money to rent, then what do they do? It becomes higher teenage pregnancy because they're at home and their parents has to go to work. And so, I think government can't solve all problems, but what we can do, we can go out and try to give our kids activities that we know that are needed. Commissioner Sanders, she was saying, she talked, we were probably getting on the bus and picking up kids and mentoring, we need that and a whole lot more. Because sooner or later, it's not going to be just Atlanta where they run across a bridge by 100 kids, shooting at one another, killing one or two of them. It's going to be here, and it's just a matter of time.
And what I would say to that, Commissioner Henderson, is the DA's office is not the fix for all of that, obviously. I agree with you that kids need something to do. Our office can do what we can and try to tell kids the dangers of being involved with gangs. But what we're at, what we're really, what we're really good at is dealing the case when it comes to court. And sadly, sometimes that means that somebody's already involved in the gang. And often, I mean, it's the defendant but also the victim at times, too. And I know Commissioner Mason was sat for a jury trial on a real awful violent case a couple of years ago. I know Commissioner Sanders apparently need to talk to you about DUI law at some point as well, because I know you came for jury selection a couple of weeks ago as well. But you're right, it's more than just the DA's office, but this is just what my office can do to try to address that. But I agree, it's more of a full community response to try to address those sort of things.
Thank you. Commissioner, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is our presenter, Mr. Tim Lawrence and Scott Turock. Number 13, GIS Purchasing is Requesting Approval of Jack Barry and Associates Contract for County-Wide Imagery.
Good evening.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. Yes, the GIS Department seeks your approval of a professional services agreement with Jack Barry and Associates. They are an aerial services firm out of Petrie City. Back in September, purchasing released an RFQ to solicit quotations on a flyover of our county this winter. Eight firms quoted prices, two are within budget. Jack Barry and Associates were the lowest bidder. We checked three references, all were good. And with that, we recommend them. A little bit more about it, price is about $40,210. We have some cost shares coming from the city of Covington's Engineering Department for 1/3, and the Noon County Water and Resources for 1/3. Our last imagery flyover was in 2020, so the images that Shayna showed you a little while ago were almost three years old. Generally, we fly the county every three to five years. Ideally, I'd like to get that down to every other year. The cost has kind of remained about $40,000 the last few times that we have flown, but the price has actually come down in time because the quality of the imagery is going to get better. And hopefully, the turnaround will be quick, too. We hope to have these images in spring time. And legal has reviewed the contract.
Thank you. We get a motion on the board. Can I get a motion, Commissioner? Hey, you guys, wake up. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the bid from Jack Barry and Associates Contract for County-Wide Imagery.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
I just have a quick question. I see that we're using a consulting firm to do this. Is it cost-effective to maybe have these materials for you to be able to utilize? Or is it cheaper just to have a consultant just do this periodically?
Well, they have their own airplanes and equipment. They have to use their equipment.
I'm thinking drones. I'm sorry, I'm thinking.
Well, we have looked into drones.
Okay.
Drones, and I'm not an expert, can only fly, let's say, 100 acres. And we need to fly 280, over 300 square miles.
Gotcha.
So, it's much more cost-effective to fly. They'll be using like a Cessna airplane. I don't know how many passes they make. They fly at 5,000 feet. If we wanted 6-inch resolution, which is what we normally buy, but they'll be flying about 2,500 feet to get 3-inch resolution.
Gotcha.
So, but it's much more cost-effective to fly with a plane over the whole county versus a drone.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number 14. Our presenter is Amanda Shoemaker. Our Human Resources Director, Jo Dan Thompson with ACCG. Human Resources and Risk Management is requesting BOC approval of the ACCG 2023 Workers' Compensation Insurance Policy Renewal in the amount of $207,187.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm Amanda Shoemaker. I'm going to turn it over to our ACCG representative, Mr. Thompson, so that he can tell you all the great things we're doing with our workers' comp program.
Thanks, Amanda. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening, Webber.
My name is Jo Dan Thompson, and I serve as the Marketing and Field Services Representative for the ACCG Insurance Programs. I appreciate the invitation tonight to present the 2023 Workers' Compensation Renewal to the county. This renewal would go into effect on January 1 of 2023. It would provide coverage for all your county employees as well as elected county officers. The renewal is based on the following criteria. The 2023 estimated payroll for the county, your claims history for 2019 through 2021. The county did receive a premium credit dividend of $1,811. And due to the county's commitment to risk management and safety and the work that Amanda and Pamela Maxwell and their team has done, the county did meet all of the requirements for the safety discount. Discount would save the county $16,946. So, the 2023 renewal premium for workers' compensation coverage, as stated before, $207,187.
Thank you. Y'all are doing an excellent job. Thank y'all so much. We need a, we need a motion, guys. Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do have item numbers 15, 16, 17, and 18. Mr. Chester Clegg, our Transportation Director, will do a presentation. 15 is Public Works is Requesting the BOC to authorize the chairman to execute an agreement with GDOT for the operation and maintenance of lighting around the proposed roundabout at State Route 162 in Rocky Plains. I will let Chester explain the other items. There's three more that need to be addressed.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for being here, sir.
We, we have a roundabout that GDOT is installing at Rocky Plains 162. And in order for them to do that at our, at the county road, state route intersection, they require the county to agree to provide electricity and maintenance for the lighting. And so, that's what this agreement is about.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh. Chester, go ahead, sir.
The next item is the same thing, except this one is at a different location. The roundabout's already installed at 142 and the entrance to Eastside High School. And for some reason, this one, this agreement is for lighting and for maintenance of the landscaping.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please. Okay. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just, didn't, did the school system have that roundabout?
Yes, sir, they did.
Did they design that?
They did.
Are they going to, are they going to maintain that roundabout at all? Or is there any discussion in that?
Well, we could have a sub-agreement with the school if the board chose to do that, but GDOT since it, they hold the county responsible for all the roundabouts in, actually, in the county. So, that's something we could talk about.
It's count a roundabout. It's count a roundabout. Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, five oh. Chester.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the 2022 road resurfacing project. And the county received seal bids on the project November 29th. We received two bids, one from Pittman Construction and one from Summit Contractors. Pittman Construction was low, had the low bid at 2.9, approximately $2.9 million. And the project would be funded by 2017 SPOST 100%. And I include the contract with the, with the agenda request and just requesting that the board approve this project. Now, the project includes a list of roads, including Cowan Road, Mills Drive West, Mills Drive East, Els Club Road, Bethany Road, and Magnet Road.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please. Okay. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson, I think. Yes, that was, yeah. Something like that. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Chester.
Mr. Chairman, my final item is the roundabout, our proposed roundabout at Kirkland Road and Jack Neely Road. We received bids, sealed bids, on November 1st. We have five companies, good companies, that bid on it. They were fairly tight bids, and the low bid was 3.248 million dollars. So, that was from Summit Construction Development. We had not used them before, but I've done some checking on them, and I've gotten some good references, and they're a reputable company. It's funded, this one also is funded by 2017 SPOST. We're expecting to take 12 months for construction, and I'm asking that the board approve the contract with Summit Construction Development LLC for a total of $3,248,196.83.
Thank you. I know this one is in District Three. No, go ahead. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Chester, is there going to be a plan on the traffic once they start this? Because I would get a question of a lot of the residents that live in that area. So where is it going to be detoured?
So the traffic is pretty horrendous at certain times because of the school letting in and out. We went to great lengths to not close the intersection. So we have what they call onsite detours, which are basically, we're going to shift some lanes over and build some roadway so that they can bypass the construction.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor? It passed 5 votes. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Chester a question? About this? No, it's another road project. I just want to.
Keep it real. Can we do it after this? Chester, you going to be here? Yeah. We got you. All right. All right. Number nine.
Chairman, we have the next item on the agenda. It is number 19. It's going to be presented by Ms. Kennedy Shannon. With iParametrics, number 19 is the update on ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act programs, youth commission, rental, and homeowner assistance, utility assistance, and COVID nonprofit assistance.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Great. So I'm here to give you guys an update. So as it stands, we are poised to release the application for the emergency rental assistance, which will include mortgage assistance and utility assistance. We have a target date of December 16th for that application to go live. We will be sending out social media posts that we've created so that you can put on your social media, along with some information sheets. In addition to the application being available online, individuals will also be able to use their cell phones to do the application. They'll be able to snap pictures of the required documentation and upload it to the system. And then for those that don't have cell phones or internet service, we've also partnered with two computer labs here where they will have hours available throughout the week so residents can go and apply using computers that the county owns. And we will be available to provide any technical assistance to individual applicants in that particular regard. How the system works is when you go into the system, there are three potential registrations. You can register as a renter, you can register as a landlord, or you can register as a mortgagee. As a mortgagee, that's the easier route. That's pretty much you saying that you're behind in your mortgage. You would have to upload documentation of a past due mortgage statement. We would review that along with your financial information. And once approved, that payment would be made directly to the mortgage company. How it works for tenants and landlords, each of them have to do a separate registration. If the tenant registers first, they can send a link to their landlord to invite them to complete the secondary part or vice versa. Once both registrations have taken place, it merges the files together. The landlords will be responsible to upload proof of ownership, like a deed, the lease, the ledger. The tenant will then be responsible for uploading household income information, you know, if they get social security or if they get food assistance. And then once that's confirmed on both sides, then a payment will be made directly to the landlord. So no payments will go to the tenants. And then for utility assistance, it's the same thing. They would have to provide a pass through utility bill. All payments will be made directly to the utility company. So that particular program is scheduled to go live December 16th for registrations for both tenants and landlords. I just want to make it clear that if a landlord chooses not to participate in the program, there's not much we can do. Because the landlord, one, has to accept the fact that they want our assistance and they want to let that tenant stay. The landlord would also sign an agreement stating that once they initiate the process, they will agree to cease any eviction proceedings. And they agree to take our payment to fully satisfy any of the previous back rent amounts for the tenant. The other program that we're launching is the Newton County ARPA Nonprofit Grant Program. We're still building that application out. That application's going to have three parts to it. It's going to be the General Nonprofit Assistance Program, the Youth Nonprofit Assistance Program, and the Food Pantry Nonprofit Assistance Program. Each of those will be in one application. So a nonprofit could potentially apply for all three of those programs if they meet the requirements. And the maximum amount awarded out of all three programs would be $180,000. $100,000 for general nonprofit. I think it's $30,000 for youth and $50,000 for food pantry. So that's where we got that $180 max, assuming they qualify for all three. That application will also be an online application. It will require the nonprofit to provide proof of their nonprofit status. They will have to be current in all their 990 filings with the IRS, all the great stuff that the federal government requires. And they will have to submit information about how they're going to use the funding according to the grants that you guys have approved last time. So those are the ones that we are launching first. We have a plan after those programs wrap up and those applications close to then launch the Low Income Senior Home Repair and the Small Business Assistance Program, which will probably come around March. We didn't want to launch all of these programs at the same time. We wanted to focus on certain programs that were most important. And we know that rental assistance is extremely important right now and people need it, and nonprofit assistance. So in working in conjunction with the city, sorry, the county manager, we agreed that those would be the top priority programs. Youth Commission. So I got your email, Commissioner Sanders, regarding the Youth Commission. I had questions about how it was going to be structured. The recommendation that I will have, that I will give to the commission is that we have an online application where the youth can go and apply. And then each commissioner will have an opportunity to appoint a youth from their district to the commission. So each commissioner will review the applications that come in from the youth in their district. You would pick a youth to appoint. The actual commission will be managed by the county manager's office. So they would make sure that the schematics are all there, the logistics are there, make sure that the students get their stipends. That way, it'll also be fair representation. Every commissioner would have an opportunity to appoint a youth commissioner to represent their district. So that's the recommendation that I'm making for that. Health Department, COVID Initiative. So we had some conversations with the Health Department. I know we originally had suggested a $50 gift card. They are suggesting that we make it a $100 gift card. We also had suggestions that we only limit it to individuals who were first-time vaccination recipients. They recommend that we open it to anyone who gets a shot. I'm completely okay with that. There's more than enough money in that line item that we've put in there. The thing is, logistically, how are we going to do it? So the Health Department has mentioned that they don't have a lot of staff, because we would have to have someone available at the Health Department where someone could come in with proof of their vaccination. Someone from the Health Department would have to take a copy of their ID, copy of the vaccination card showing that they were just vaccinated, and have them sign a form stating that they got their $100 gift card. So we need staff to do that. So we're still working logistically on who would be the best person or office to handle that. But the Health Department has stressed that they don't necessarily have the staff capacity to do that on an ongoing basis. So we're still working through that component. And then there's also still some logistics that need to take place regarding the community mental health and the partnership with the police department. So those are the updates for the programs that we've discussed or that you guys have approved to date. I do know that we wanted to make a recommendation regarding homeless services, Jarvis?
Yes, that's correct, regarding the funding source. We have another item tonight that we're going to present before the board. And we just wanted to utilize some ARPA funding to address the homeless. And you indicated that would be eligible.
Yes. So any homeless services that you wanted to do would be ARPA-eligible? I know we did not address that in our recommendations. I know that was something that we wanted to come back to. I also know it's really important right now, especially with warming centers, and it's really cold outside. And so being able to use those resources to help those organizations that are helping the homeless. If you need our assistance with helping to craft that or doing the agreement for that, we are here to help. I'm not sure if you guys had an organization in mind already?
We do. And it's actually the warming shelters.
Perfect. Okay. Awesome.
Well, I'm going to ask you, if you would, send this information in the email, because the Commissioners are trying their best to keep up right now, as you're saying.
Yes. I'm going to send you all an updated email. You also will all get the link when the applications go live so that you can blast it out to your constituents to make them aware that the rental, mortgage, and utility assistance program has gone live. We have a target date of January 1st for the nonprofit assistance program, so we're still building out that application. And once that goes live, of course, we will send out social media posts, marketing materials, and information to each of you so that you can share it with your constituents and they can go on and start applying.
And we want to make sure that we get that information from you, because we want to make sure everybody sends out the same thing, make sure it's a uniform.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
But we do have, got a couple of questions. I forgot who first. Go ahead.
My question is with the nonprofit. You said the maximum per nonprofit is $180,000?
That's assuming they can all, if they apply for all three. So a nonprofit can go in and just apply for the General Nonprofit Assistance Grant. That's up to $100,000. Up to $100,000. Yeah. But say, for instance, it's a nonprofit and they also do youth programming. They could potentially apply for the General Nonprofit Grant and the Youth Nonprofit Grant and get a maximum, I think, of $130,000 or $150,000, depending on how it breaks down. $150,000. Because the youth engagement has a max of 50,000 and nonprofit has a max of $100,000. And, go ahead. Nope. And say it's a church, right? And they've got a youth program, a food pantry, and they do the whole shebang. They can apply for up to $180,000.
And I had some individuals ask if they received assistance previously, like from any other grant, like we've had funding out for nonprofits and small businesses. Were they qualified if they've already received funding regarding COVID?
So we ask about that. If they've got funding for, so we ask each of the nonprofits to kind of tell us what they want to do with the money, right? So if they've got funding for that particular purpose already, then of course, we wouldn't want to give them money for something they already got funded for. But we're assuming these nonprofits will be asking for money for programs in which they have not received assistance. But we do ask, at least, if they have received some form of assistance in the past.
Let me ask you. Did you address, because I might have not heard it, did you address the food pantry?
Yes. Yes. Food pantry is in that nonprofit assistance. So it'll be part of the application that will have three separate programs in it. And each nonprofit can apply for each one. And the Food Pantry Assistance Program had the max of $30,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
In regards to the mental health, just to give you a name, Robert Fox is our accountability court person that I've actually worked with. And we've actually traveled to NACO to learn about mental health, and that's where it came from.
Okay.
Working with him and bringing on the Sheriff Department with that. So I don't know, whenever you have time, maybe we can set a meeting?
Absolutely. Because we're going to have to put some, dig into it, because I think the amount that we recommended is not enough. We just kind of put in a placeholder just to identify. But there's definitely going to be some increased costs related to that. And again, we also have to address any increased liability. So absolutely, if we want to set up a meeting with those stakeholders and try to figure that out, we're available.
Commissioner Edwards, then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in terms of nonprofit, that's the go-live date of January, isn't that what you said?
Correct.
For the application process?
Correct.
And that, that process is still going to include, even for the nonprofits, a demonstration of financial hardship during that COVID period, whatever that might be, correct?
Correct. Yes.
It's going to be part of that process, that whole application process.
Correct. Because most of the nonprofits were negatively impacted by COVID, right? Even if they got negatively impacted in 2020, they're still negatively impacted. So we just want to know what that negative impact from COVID was. A lot of nonprofits were not able to raise the same amount of money that they were prior to COVID. And so we do ask about how their organization has been negatively affected by COVID, how their food pantry program has been negatively affected, and how their youth programs have been negatively affected. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. What I want to ask is that once we start giving out grants through your group, through your consulting service, will the public be able to look at the peoples who have been awarded the grants? So how would they know who have been awarded what grant, what church?
Absolutely.
So how would they know that?
So we at iParametrics aren't making the payments. That will go through Brittany. So we will give Brittany a list of organizations that meet the requirements, how much they apply for. And we recommend that you make that information public on your website. So as organizations are funded, you can put that information on there, because it is public information and people may want to know what other organizations are funded. So that would be my recommendation, that that be included in some type of link on your website that's updated on a monthly basis or whatever, to show which organizations have received funding and how much they've received.
Correct. So I guess the follow-up question is to, I'm county manager, Sims, how could we do that and make sure that that's available from the very infancy of the program?
Thank you. That's a great question, Commissioner Henderson. We will have access to the information, and we will be providing it monthly on our website to allow our citizens to know.
One last question. How much money did you say is in that particular group of money? Is it $3 million, $2 million, or et cetera?
For which program? I'm sorry.
For, you said that for the nonprofits, for the food bank, and I'm doing just one, there's one. And you get up to, I think, $130,000, $180,000?
Right. So I think total, all combined, there's, let me tell you, hold on. I think it was almost $3 million total from all three programs. So it was $2 million for a general nonprofit, and then I think it was like $500,000 for youth engagement, and $400,000 for food security. So almost $3 million total. In any event, that we see that the demand is greater than what's there, I will come back to you and let you know, hey, we've given all the money away, but we still have these applications left. You guys still have some money in the pile that you can reallocate if you want to fund those additional organizations.
So would the, I think you had mentioned before, when times you came before the board said that the underserved areas?
Yes.
That you knew said they would get a little bit better attention?
So how that works, and that's for every program. That's for rental assistance. If they're in a qualified census tract, their applications will be processed first. Same with nonprofit assistance. If they're in a qualified census tract, or if they meet a particular income guideline, being low, very low income, they will be processed first, and they will get first dibs to the funding. So any nonprofit that's in a qualified census tract will be processed first.
Thank you. So just for the counties, since I have been re-elected, not quite officially sworn in, just call me and let me know.
Gotcha.
Just for anybody.
And we'll, I'll put the information so we can put a link so individual organizations can check to see if they're in a qualified census tract. It's pretty simple. You go to a website, you put the address in, and it'll tell you if you're in the purple box, you're in a qualified census tract. If you're not, then you're not. We're going to check that on the back end when we're reviewing eligibility, but it helps to have applicants know before they apply if they're in a qualified census tract or not. You're welcome.
Mr. Sims, I think that would be a great idea, what Commissioner Henderson said, if we can make that part of our transparency too, that we have on the website, that would be great. That would be great.
Yes, sir.
And we'll be able to provide you the information, even like for the rental assistance program, not individual names, but just the number of households that are assisted for each of your districts, so that you can share that information as well.
Commissioner Sanders.
Just a suggestion, and hopefully my colleagues would kind of agree with that. I've saw, I've seen the other counties when they actually presented the checks to the nonprofits and the small businesses, they actually did the ceremony.
Yep.
And so I think that would be great to actually have that. And we have marketing dollars to be able to put that on.
Yep.
So I think that would be great to have that ceremony, and it could be, everybody can see who actually received the funding as well. But it'd be a special thing.
Absolutely. That's a good way to kind of share to the public how the money's been used in the community. So that would be something that we could coordinate with Brittany. Once it's determined that a nonprofit would be awarded, you know, you could do it out of form like this at a meeting where at the end, those organizations come up and get funded, or you could do a special session. But absolutely, we've seen that happen across the country.
And Commissioners, I would like for us, this is a, well, not a suggestion, it's already been approved, to us to move forward with that transportation shuttle. And the reason why, I had the opportunity to volunteer as a consultant with the Junior Achievement Facility yesterday, and Veterans Memorial was actually there, obviously, in the sixth grade Veterans Memorial. And this place is amazing. And I think some of you probably went for the ribbon cutting for meth, but it's tons of Fortune 500 companies that are there. And to hear. And to hear those administrators and teachers that at some of those youth, that's the first time they've ever been to Atlanta, that, that touched my heart. And so us having that shuttle and moving forward, go ahead and get those shuttle for those areas so we can provide those activities for kids to be able to experience more than outside of Atlanta, I think we need to go ahead and move forward with the funding that's already there. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what, the bucket, you may have said it, I just missed it, the bucket of money for small business, what was that total again?
So small business assistance was... I think we had a million dollars in small business assistance. We didn't, a million dollars currently.
Nonprofits was what?
Nonprofits, we made it two million.
But it was different. It was different avenues, is that correct?
Correct. So for small business assistance, we had a max of twenty thousand dollars per business. Yeah, so nonprofits can get more, which, why we put more money in that pot. But again, same with small business. Once we launch small business, if we see an overwhelming response, you guys still have money to the side. So that's why you guys are in a really good position. That, that way you can, you know, put additional resources in programs where you see the need is there. As opposed to parking it there now, you can be reactionary and see, hey, we've got this swarm of small business applications. We only got a million dollars. We may need to put another five hundred thousand dollars in there.
I'm not sure I agree with that amount.
You think the amount is too low or too high? Oh, you think the non, the nonprofit and small business, the disparity?
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that, but.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We greatly appreciate you.
No problem. You guys have a happy holiday.
You too. Thank you so much.
We are forging ahead, Chairman. We are already at number twenty. The next item on the agenda is Office of the County Manager is requesting authorization for property exchange with Gaethers Church, thirteen seventy-five Newton Factory Bridge Road in Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. Mr. Patrick Jockstad, our county attorney, will present.
Good evening. You should all have in front of you the same information that's being displayed up on the screen right now. I want to walk through what the request that's been presented to your management team is, and then tell you the decision we're asking you to make. There are two parcels with stars on the information I've given you. There's one with a red star and one with a yellow star. The property with the red star is owned by Gaethers Church. The property with the yellow star is owned by Newton County. If you look at the property with the yellow star just above it and to the left, you'll see the church, Gaethers Church. And if you're wondering, why does the county own that piece and why does the church own the piece way up north, is because in two thousand and two, as part of the process for acquiring property for the Bear Creek Reservoir, the county exchanged the ten acres with the yellow star and roughly six acres with the red star with the church. The reason for that exchange is that the county needed the property that has the yellow star on it because it adjoins the creek that you see, the stream, river, whatever one calls it, that would have led into the Bear Creek Reservoir, and it was necessary for providing appropriate buffers and such as that. So here we are. That, that exchange happened twenty years ago, two thousand and two. So here we are twenty years later, the church has requested that we exchange those properties back. And there's a few things I want you to be aware of before you make your decision. We're not asking you today to actually approve the final exchange. I'm asking you today to, to authorize me to go forward with the procedure. And the reason is, it's a very cumbersome procedure under Georgia law when we exchange property. Georgia law requires that in order for us to engage in a property exchange like this, we have to do a number of things. The first thing we have to do is get both parcels appraised. Both the property we're going to get and the property we're going to give. So I have to hire an appraiser and have to have that appraiser conduct two different appraisals. The Georgia law also requires that we run a legal notice for four weeks prior to closing of the exchange. So for four weeks before we have a closing, there has to be a legal notice run informing the world that this closing will occur and that this exchange will happen. You also are required, in order to proceed with the exchange, to approve both of the appraisals. And the final step, or not the final step, the final hurdle that has to be cleared, is that the appraisals must establish that the property that we receive is worth at least as much as the property we give up. In, in other words, it either has to be an even exchange or we have to come out for the better. If you look at the maps, you'll see that the parcel in red, which is the property the church owns, is roughly six acres, five point seven acres according to the tax maps. According to the deeds that were executed back in two thousand and two, it's a little over six acres. The property that we currently own, that the church wants back, is ten acres. I don't know what the value of the land is. I, I'm not a real estate appraiser, I could not tell you, but my guess is that those two parcels of land are probably rough, roughly equivalent. They're awfully close together. Maybe one is better land than the other, but my, my gut would tell me that we may have a value problem. The other thing you need to be aware of, and I can't tell you this for certain, but when we, when the county acquired the ten acres, again, it was done in conjunction with the Bear Creek Reservoir. This board has consistently declined to take action to dispose of property acquired for the Bear Creek Reservoir because you might build it someday. So if this ten acres is an integral part of making the, making the, making the reservoir happen and you give it up, you're going to have to buy it again if ultimately the reservoir comes to fruition. I don't know if that's going to happen. None of us know if it's going to happen, but it is something that this board needs to be aware of. This process does not come without cost. Obviously, for me to, to hire an appraiser, an appraiser to conduct two appraisals is going to be, for, for land of this nature, my guess would be total cost somewhere three, three to five thousand dollars, something like that for the appraisals. We probably are going to have to have the property currently owned by the church, the red star property, probably have to have it surveyed. The reason is, there's a significant difference between the acreage shown on the tax assessor's maps and the acreage shown on the deeds by which the county acquired the property. I have not run title of these properties, so I can't tell you for certain if it's a problem, but it's a possibility. I also will have to run title to both of these properties. We can't engage in exchange unless we have the title run. It's going to be a closing, just like any other closing. And it'll take some time. So there is some expense between the appraisals, if we have to get a survey, the title work, and all the, all the fees that, that I'll have to charge for the time it takes, and legal advertising costs. It's going to cost a little bit of money. It does not make a whole lot of sense, in my mind, for the church to own property that's several hundred yards from where the church is and for the county to own the property that's right next door to the church. I understand the church's desire to make this exchange. But I do want to caution this board that there's time element, there's an expense element, and there's a risk element to the county. And it's my job to help the county do what's best for the county. I, I don't exist as much as I want to help the church. I, I can't provide. I can't. If I'm tipping the scale one way or the other, I've got to tip it in favor of the county. So what we're asking for you to do today is to instruct myself and the manager as to whether or not you want us to proceed with this process. You can always vote against it when the exchange is brought to you. So we could proceed with this, take some time, vote against it when the exchange is brought to you, but to do that, we're going to, you're going to incur some expenses. I'm going to have to get these appraisals. I'm going to have to do the work I've got to do. We may or may not have to get an appraisal of the northernmost parcel as, or not an appraisal, a survey. I, I tend to think we won't because I think the boundaries are fairly well-defined. It's a straight line along the northern boundary. There's this weird squiggly line. You can barely see it up on the screen or on your package. I don't know if that's a creek. I'm not sure what that boundary is, if it's a creek. We probably won't have to get it surveyed, but we'll have to find that out. And then there's the issue, obviously, of the reservoir. So that's what we're here for you today. Mr. Sims, you think I've left anything out? I want to make sure I give an accurate picture.
I think you included everything.
Yeah. So we really need some guidance as to whether, whether you want us to open a file or close a file. That's really what it boils down to. Are we going to go through this process, bring it back to you after we incur the expense? Or do you want us to, tell us to cut this off now? It's entirely up to you. I'm happy to do it either way.
So Patrick, let me, let me start off and I, I, you know, I love the church and, and, you know, as a minister, I don't want to be the bad guy, but I got to ask you a question. You know, you got to do what's right for the county, first of all, because that's what we raise our hand and do. How can we find out, is that land necessary for the reservoir before we start that process?
We'll need to probably either have your engineers look at it or have somebody dig up the old reservoir files and see, see what the story behind it was. I mean, I...
Honestly, I would tell you that's what we need to do before we even go further. We need to know, is that land necessary for the reservoir? Because I'm going to tell you, the way we are growing and economic development that are approaching our community, I think sooner or later, we're going to need a reservoir. So we need to know, this board need to know, is that land deemed necessary for that particular reservoir?
What I can tell you is that, that's Henderson Mill Road, as you all know, where the property fronts. Everything on the other side of Henderson Mill Road is owned by the county already. Everything on this side, the side of the road where the church is, starting at the very north where you see a little muddy pond, it's a little muddy, that's actually a big pond. Every parcel from there down south to the next piece south of the yellow star property is owned by the county. So the county incurred pretty great expense back in two thousand and two to acquire everything along that side of the road. That tells me that at the time, under those plans, it was either desired or needed. I don't know if the county in two thousand and two was in the business of buying land it wanted or land it needed. I think this county, this board, is more in the business of buying land it needs. And I don't mean to criticize the prior board, but every, every board has a different view towards real estate acquisitions. In order to find out if that's needed, we, we will have to probably pull the Bear Creek Reservoir files and have an engineer have a look at it and give us a, just let us know, do we need that or was it, was there, you know, was there a?
I'm sure James Brown.
We could certainly have him look at it, sure.
I'm sure he can, he can tell us. But I'm going to let the Commissioners ask questions. I know Commissioner Edwards was first. Now I got you. But he, he was first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'm familiar with both these pieces of property. A, I think I would ask that, that if, we're not voting on a resolution, but certainly a subject that can be tabled for a period of time so that I can discuss with the commissioners of that particular church about some issues I want to talk to them about. Just to give you a little history, this piece of property that Gaethers Church now owns is next to a piece of the county property that is basically a landfill. It's an organic landfill, but it's, it's a landfill. I've been on it, I've seen it, it's a wasteland. Right next door to this particular piece of property that Gaethers Church owns. And the piece of property that the county took, if I remember correctly, it was under threat of condemnation. So I cannot swear that, but if I remember correctly, that's where, how that happened. And the last thing I would like to bring up is, if we did a land swap, could we reduce the size of the piece of property that Gaethers Church needs so that we have a shoreline that we own as a county on a reservoir or whatever? So, but all that has got to be, I've got to speak with the people in the church about a couple of financial issues before, before I would, I would suggest that. Those things are going through my mind, so I was going to bring it up. So I would ask that, if it's District One, I would ask that we put this, we, we put this on hold for a period of sixty days, gets through the holidays, and maybe through the, the first month of the year or so, that we can discuss further. That would give me time to get with the church folks and discuss that with them.
And if I could, I'll answer sort of the two questions that I heard from you. Number one, could we reduce that ten acres? We certainly could. If, if that's the deal that's ultimately made, we could survey out a smaller portion of it, appraise a smaller portion of it. Secondly, was this property bought under threat of condemnation? I don't know how much threat of condemnation there was, but all of the property that the county acquired under, in order for the Bear Creek Reservoir, was, was what the law understands to be under threat of condemnation. When the county goes out in the marketplace and buys property, it is always under threat of condemnation because you can condemn. And I can tell you with absolute certainty, a handful of those parcels that, that the county owns that you can see on that screen were in fact condemned. The parcel to the south of the yellow parcel was condemned. I think some of the parcels across Henderson Mill Road were condemned. Now that doesn't mean, you know, all that means is maybe it could have been a title problem, it could have been a seller was absent, it could have been a mortgage company didn't cooperate. You never know what it could have been, we went to war with them. We don't know the circumstances under all those condemnations, but, but it, it was acquired. There was at least a, the possibility of a condemnation to make this acquisition.
I got, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I was, I was thinking the reason why that, since I'm the old county board, that it was purchased for a dam of sort there, too. Because they found out that they said they couldn't put it on the other side. If it was condemnation, I don't remember a condemnation, but I can say, as far as from my perspective, I do not support any condemnation. I don't vote for them because I think it's taking people property. And I believe you need to pay them what they asked for it or work out a deal with them so you can purchase their property. That's just me. But they wouldn't have bought it. They didn't do a condemnation unless they needed it for the reservoir, the pole reservoir. But I said all that just to this, here lately, I think we gave back some, sold back some property about a year, two years ago, gave back to them. And so I'm just kind of, I'm sure you had to figure, you know, is it, do as I say or do as I do?
Yes, sir. So...
I may finish, please. I don't think it's right to give somebody else back their property and then look at the church and say, well, we're not going to give yours back. And that was all was part of that reservoir that we talked about. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and that, you're absolutely correct. There, there have been a number, I could not tell you how many, but a, more than a handful of parcels acquired for the Bear Creek Reservoir have been sold back to the original owners. And the reason for that is, the contract that the county entered into when they bought the property required that to happen. And, and it's only been done when the contract has required it. In fact, this board declined to, to sort of go into a program where we offered it all back up for sale. Maybe a previous board, but the Board of Commissioners declined to take that action. But there were a number of parcels that, when the county bought it, the contract required that the county offer it, to, offer to sell it back to them if certain things didn't happen within a certain period of time, so.
Commissioner Sanders.
My question is now, probably to ask this to the tax assessors, as you probably know, I'm looking at the difference in the acreage and I'm seeing that ten acres is worth a hundred thousand, the five acres is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
So can you explain why the value of assessment?
I can't. No. I, I will say this, and I don't mean this critically toward the tax assessors. Every year, the tax assessor values some forty thousand parcels. I, I don't think any of us reasonably, realistically expect that every one of those assessments is absolutely correct. Right? They do a really good job. If, if they didn't do a really good job, the state wouldn't approve the assessments. But can I explain it? I can't. What my, what I suspect, what my expectation is, that the, the smaller acreage parcel, because it's further from the, so the green and blue on the map, the blue is water and the green is wetlands. So, which means, you know, when you're adjacent to water, adjacent to wetlands, you're low and you're generally, you know, more, more prone. None of it's in floodplain, but it's probably lower, less usable property than the property to the north. But as Commissioner Edwards said, the property to the north, you can even see, and as you look on, look on that map, you can see it's adjacent to, I think it's an inert landfill, so it's not a garbage landfill, it's more of a construction debris landfill. So, you know, stumps and dirt and stuff. That probably has some impact on the value. But, you know, I... But, you know, I, I wouldn't guess, and, and the law actually, sometimes the law says, you must determine the values, but this law actually says you must appraise. So, we have to go out in the marketplace and get an appraisal, we can find out.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Cowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, my question is, and, and I don't know if we know this at this particular time, but what would be, if we know that this land where the Yellow Star really isn't developable? You can't really develop on it. What would they even want to exchange? Why would they wanna exchange it if you can't really develop? Is there a specific intent? Do we know why they would want this particular land back if you can't really develop on it? Because I would think that would be your objective, because the church maybe wants to expand, or they wanna grow, or they wanna develop, but if it's really not developable land, why would they even want it? I don't even know if we know that.
Right, and I don't know that. It, it could very well be that. It could also be the very human feeling of, the county got this property, builds a reservoir, here we are twenty years later, there's no reservoir, I want my property back. Which is a very reasonable response, that very well could be what it is. But I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard directly from the church as to the reason. Could very well be they wanna grow. It's that this parcel and the existing church are separated by the road. I think it's the Newton Factory Bridge Road that separates the two. But, you know, it's not terribly uncommon for a church to, as it grows, to straddle a road. So, you know, it could be they want overflow parking, they want an area for recreation, who knows? And those things would probably be permitted and would make sense in property, on property that's otherwise not developed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went through a lot of this stuff, what, twenty nineteen, I think, is when we filed all the covenants and the deeds. Had to go through those. Some of that property was returned back. But I'm going by memory now, and I may be wrong, but it seems like we've got twenty-two million dollar investment in that property, and it is paid for. I'm reluctant to do anything at this point until we know. Because we had some engineers come here, one guy was from, had a 401K.
401-4?
404 permitting. And then Mr. Whitesides, I remember him, because I've done some work with him. He said there was a fifteen-year, I think, we've read, did you look at that? Well, hey, that was six years ago. So, we ain't got much longer. So, I, I'm just reluctant to open any file, incur any additional expenses on this property, until we know what we're gonna have. Because Newton County is, is growing. It's definitely, it's probably gonna need it. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
And two, I, I don't know, I wanna make sure the board knows that anything that's built in Stanton Springs or Stanton Grove, that water comes from Newton County, not Walton County, not Jasper, not Morgan, but it comes from Newton, so we gotta be watchful. But, so that was a motion, was that a motion?
I, I don't, we don't really need a motion to, to direct staff to figure out the engineering issue in it. I mean, I think we can do that without a motion.
No, they had a motion to-
To table it?
For sixty days. I think we do need that.
That's fine.
Can I get a second with that? Can I have a second there? Yeah, I just don't wanna do it.
I'll second it, but again, I'm just reluctant to do anything on that property.
He got, so, it's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards, that we tabled this, it's been seconded by Commissioner Cowell, and discussion, Commissioner Henderson. I'm, yeah, we tabled, I'm sorry, we tabled this.
Right, but as you said, a quick question. I think, I, I believe that, that we should be consistent as a board. And maybe, maybe I was, in fact, I don't believe in treating one, one entity, whether it's a church, or whether somebody live differently from anyone else. And so, if we gave the opportunity to sell back property to, to other, I guess, families, then we should get that same option to the church. Let me say this, but when we did it, and I was here, and we did it, it was, because we knew water, we were gonna need water. But when the new commissioner came in, they weren't quite as interested in the water factor as we are, as it's coming back to us now. And when we wanted to sell it, guess what? You couldn't get the same money that you, that you had, that we had bought it for, you started looking at it. So, you know, I, I, you know, I just, I just, where I'm at, is that they do the same as we had done for others. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, one more comment. I, I asked for this to be delayed, because I believe it could be a compromise that's financial, that's evil, and capital. That's what I'm thinking, so, and the church is with it. So, that's, that's what I'm asking, that's what I said.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? He made a motion that, you seconded a motion that we tabled this.
I know, I know. You're on favor for sixty days.
Yep.
If you still want to try to work a deal with the church, is that what you're saying?
I'm gonna discuss the thing with the church, I'll serve the church in the day.
How do I get in for the church?
I think you all want to get in for the church.
Well-
I know that's-
It'd be good, and then-
Yeah.
See, okay. That's fine, we'll just move on.
Yeah. All in favor? We'll get a chance here from the church, if they bring it back, if it's brought back to the board. Okay, this, okay, we're gonna ask, again, all in favor of tabling this for sixty days?
I, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm not, I'm not-
Okay. So, wait, wait a minute, it's a motion on the floor, we can't talk on a motion?
You can't have one, you can't have one.
Yeah. I mean, that's a- Was it five one? It was five one?
Table it, but it's fine.
I didn't, it's five one, I didn't see it, but if, if the county attorney said it was five one, it's five one. Alright, so we're gonna table that for sixty days. Five one.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number twenty-one by Mr. Jarvis Sims. Office of the County Managers requesting BOC approval of Georgia Probation Management Inc. Contract for probation supervision and rehabilitation services.
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Chairman and Board, we have before you all just a contract with Georgia Probation Management to provide contractual services for probation supervision and rehab services. This contract has been reviewed by legal, it's ready for you all, approval.
Thanks, sir. I seek a motion, please?
So, move this, that, and that.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards, and seconded by Commissioner Mason, discussion. All in favor? Five one, thank you.
Chairman, we have items now, number twenty-two, update on lost, the local option sales tax negotiations.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. I won't, I won't keep you too long. So, the, what you should have in front of you is a resolution to approve the lost certificate. Briefly, the lost local option sales tax, it's one of the one penny taxes that are collected at the point of sale. That sales tax generated fourteen point eight million dollars this year. The revenues are used to reduce property taxes. So, that sales tax gave Newton County residents about a twenty-five percent reduction in their property tax. Every ten years, the county and the cities have to get together and execute a new lost distribution certificate. The current certificate we have in front of you is virtually identical to the certificate for the last ten years. This one has seventy-five percent of the revenues going to the county. The cities are all in support of that, and so, I am asking the Board of Commissioners approve this certificate, so we can get it submitted to the Department of Revenue.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? Wait.
So?
Thank you, just before they change their mind. Thank you. It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason, and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Sims. The, I guess the question, and what you just stated, you said it was twenty-five percent reduction in the, I guess, property tax of the citizens of Newton County, and, of the fourteen million dollars concerning lost. I mean, I'm asking, maybe I just, can you, can you, can you-
Thirty percent increase.
Okay, can you explain, can you explain, because he, he's on the mic.
So, can you explain what lost is utilized for in that?
Well, if, if I may continue just a little bit, I understand that lost is, is to pay back taxpayers, citizen in Newton County taxes, I mean, on taxes, or in sometime even debt, but in this particular case, taxes. But I'm saying, you get the percentage that you're talking about, and when you have, have citizens calling you and talking about their property tax, even with the rollback, we still, there's still a higher property tax, even on my tax bill, which, you know, I'm just like everybody else. I think it jumped, it jumped up, it jumped up, even on my, on my tax bill. So, I, I was just, how could they see, if they could see it on their tax bill, the amount of money that they're, that they're supposed to be receiving from, from lost?
Yeah, that, that's a great point. I, I don't think enough people understand how their property taxes work for lost, what there should be on the tax bill. And, forgive me, I can't remember if it is on the assessment notice or on the actual tax bill. But on one of those two documents, it will show what the lost rollback is in the form of the millage rate. So, say, for example, the, the county would have had to have levied a millage rate of fifteen, but because of lost, you were able to roll it back down to twelve. You would see a, a millage rollback of three percent, or three mils on, and again, I can't remember if it's the tax bill or the assessment notice. So, that information is there for the, for the taxpayers, but I'm not sure if there's anything else we could do to get the word around. Lost really is a great, a great tax, especially for a place like Newton County. It's a sales tax, so when people come into the community, they spend money here, that money goes to reduce property taxes for locals, it's a great thing.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed?
Now, let's do that, let's do it again, because I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. It passed for one.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is twenty-two A, adoption of the resolution R. one, two, zero, six, two, two, A.
So, Patrick, you wanna explain the resolution to go along with lost, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so, at the, at the end of this lost process, we have to submit the lost certificate to the Department of Revenue, so they know after, that one cent sales tax is distributed, and the resolution before you authorize it has to complete the lost certificate submitted to the Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Seek a motion, please? It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason, and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed for one, one extension. You want to state your reason why?
Well, it's, it's very simple, you know, our taxes here in Newton County is still high, even though we talked about a rollback, and it's one that, that basically I didn't support, but somehow, no, I ended up voting for it. But I just feel as the, the average taxpayer, you know, we, we're told it, it's rolling back, and it's less than where the, where it is getting, it's getting higher. And until we kind of figure out a something, a program, or a way to reduce, to truly reduce our taxes, this can be like this every year. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item, we are on number twenty-three, presented by Mr. Jarvis Sims, warming center update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, back on October the fourth, you all tasked me to meet with the city to discuss warming shelters for our county. Had the opportunity to meet with the city manager, as well as the deputy city manager, and they are in agreement with us providing the warming shelters. We also looked within our county to see if any of our partners provided this service. And we, for my first time, had the opportunity to go over to Pastor Let's facility, Rainbow. Had the opportunity to see her operations, was very impressed with it. I think this would be great service for this particular need for us. We also discussed the financials, the county. If it's possible, we would like to support with fifty thousand using our ARPA funding. And the city would like to contribute thirty thousand of their, for contributions. The city is also asking us to have a procedure where we provide monthly reports of financials, which I do believe that is in agreement, as well as for us to continue to do the site assessments, which I did go over to this particular facility and do an site assessment, as well as have, you know, ongoing conversations with Pastor Let, which with my first meeting with her, I was, I was impressed, was very impressed, actually, with the facility, with the, the essential services that they had, as far as bedding, showers. We also talked about food, clothing, all of those services were in one house, as far as them versus us trying to outsource it and have different entities provide the same services. She can do it there, at that particular facility. So, if the board would approve this item for us to support Rainbow in the amount of fifty thousand utilized in the ARPA funding.
Okay, let me get a motion on the floor. Can I get a motion on the floor, please? It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason, and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, Commissioner Sanders?
At the parade, I was talking to some city council members, and they told me it was, they were asking me questions about it, that they agreed to it, but it was with the church. So, are they aware, just wanna make sure, because they, they questioned me, they stopped me.
Okay.
So, they said it was with the church, so are they aware? Because they said they were partnering with us in regards to a church.
They're partnering with us, actually, we have before you all an IGA, so their partnership is actually with the county, and we will be partnering with Rainbow as providing this service.
Because they were informed that they were given the fund, because they said by law, and Pastor probably corrected me on this, I didn't know this, they said by law, the city municipalities cannot donate to nonprofits, they have to give it to the county.
That's correct.
And they were informed that it was a church. So, this, I was stopped on Saturday at the parade, that's how I knew this was on the, coming up agenda, this was discussed. So, that was, that's my question in regards to that. And my second one, I don't know, Pastor's probably gonna ask the first one. When we talked about this on October fourth, you mentioned it was coming out of the contingency fund. So, now I see it's ARPA, so my question would be is, is this coming out of the five million that we already approved? Or the amount of money that's left over that we possibly gonna utilize for something?
If it's possible, the, the fifty thousand would come out of the, the money that we have not utilized from ARPA. And the reason why I am proposing utilizing ARPA funding is because this is an allowable expense. I spoke with our consultants about this, and this is an allowable expense that is, you know, is used for these situations, versus us using contingency. As, as regarding the IGA, the IGA is with the city, so they will be providing the funding to us. We will be managing the relationship with Rainbow. As far as, she also, Pastor Let is a nonprofit entity there.
I'm aware, I'm aware. I just wanna make sure, because I think the city councils is thinking something else. I don't have a problem with supporting the nonprofits, but the council members who voted are thinking something else, because they stopped me. So, I would like to make sure that they are aware, are, are we understanding? Because they completely told me something different on Saturday.
I honestly, I've spoke with their manager, as well as their deputy, and I...
Yeah, but the manager is not the official, the people that vote, so that's why I want to make sure.
Well, I can't, I don't know how they presented it to they, to their council.
Yeah, so these council members said something different. So that, that was my only question. I, I just want to make sure that we are with them. That's all, that's all.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just add to the conversation, whenever there's an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, it's not where the city is in agreement with the warming shelter director. So they're not, the city of Covington has not partnered with the actual warming shelter themselves, they are partnering with the actual county. And so that's the partnership, so it really, it's somewhat irrelevant of, of where that partnership goes, because their partnership is not with the warming shelter, their partnership is with the county. And then the county will actually decide and determine how those funds are actually utilized. That's generally how an intergovernmental agreement works, whenever it's between the city and the county. And so I just kind of want to bring clarity to that particular portion of the conversation. So the city is not in an agreement with the warming shelter, or the shelter themselves, they're in agreement with the actual county. If that helps.
Commissioner Mason, that's exactly correct. The IGA is with the city.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Okay, so let me, let me jump in right quick. So, Mr. Sims had the opportunity to meet with the city manager. City manager took his instructions from the council, and they wanted to make sure that they got a, if I'm not mistaken, I think this is the update you gave me, they wanted to make sure that they got a update on the expenses that was utilized, was that...
That is correct.
Every...
Month.
Every month. So the council should be aware that the county was meeting with Pastor Let and, and wanted to use Pastor Let, but I just want to make sure that we put that out there as well. Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I'm aware of how intergovernmental agreements work, but speaking with fellow elected officials, that's what they informed me of what they... Thank you. That's what they informed me of what they say. I cannot go against what they mentioned to me, I mean, when they asked to stop me. So if that's what their understanding was when they voted on this, then that's only my clear, I just want to make sure I'm clear on their end. Yes, I know intergovernmental agreements, the county, I know all of that, I'm educated. I just want to make sure that these elected officials, based on what they thought they voted on, is what is happening. And I get that the county is managing, I get about the intergovernmental agreement, but that's not what was stated to me, so I just wanted to make sure, just out of, out of fairness.
So, so Pastor Let has, so I, I think I know what the confusion is coming in there. So she has ran the warming shelter out, from the church, and from, over, what's, over at, off of Turner Lake, I don't know the name of that road right there, but off of Turner Lake. So that, that may be what the confusion is coming in, 'cause she have, she had ran it at the churches also, and she has ran it at her, at the homeless shelter.
That is true.
No, at her church in Porterdale. Yeah, she has ran it at both locations.
And they were at church last year.
Which one did you support last year? Did you support one last year?
No, we didn't support, we didn't support, we didn't, wait a minute, we didn't support one last year. We supported, we, the city did. We supported one the year before, we partnered with the city, and that was in Porterdale, at her church. Go ahead. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. So... I, I think at the end of the day, is about the people having somewhere they can go where it's, where it's warm. But just imagine, so are they gonna be housed at the, 'cause this is, this is in District Four, which means something, may mean nothing. But are they gonna be, are they gonna be housed at the initial place where, where the storm hit, and which we gave thirty thousand dollars to help with that, and then the city gave thirty thousand dollars? Are they gonna be at the, the back, I think it was the back building?
It's the back, it's the back building where, where the beds are. So if I'm, let me, is it, how many beds is allocated for?
Twenty.
So it's allocated for twenty beds, and if it go over, I'm hoping that she will be able to take it towards her church if, if need be. Yeah.
Yeah, well, but, but anyway, you know, I think we need to support somewhere for them to go.
I agree with that.
We support somewhere for them to go, but I just remember Miss Anita, former City Council Councilwoman, she had came, and she had asked about us supporting Grace and their warming shelter too. And I think there was a question that was posed to County Manager Sims, and, and I thought there would be a piece of the city that he would be looking at, whether or not we were gonna partner with the city and do a warming shelter, because I think it's my understanding that they, they have warming shelter there too as well. And so, do, I mean, so I guess the question is, is duplicating the same services for who, we don't know how many folks, but duplicating the services, and so are we gonna contribute possibly to both of them, or are we gonna just contribute just to one?
So I don't think Grace had a warming shelter, I think Grace partnered with Will and Heppers. The city, the city partnered with Will and Heppers, they gave Will and Heppers over a hundred thousand dollars to put together a warming shelter, and they utilized Grace Church to do that. That's what that was.
And if I may add, Mr. Chairman, speaking, I believe, we talking about the same person, there was some of the services that were provided, but there were some things that were not needed regarding the shower, whereas the place where I toured, they had everything there, they had the showers, they had the beds, they had, if people needed clothes, they had clothes. They just had a one-stop shop, so I thought it would be more, better for this particular service than we need for our community.
Okay, so anybody who wanted to, who wanted to could come there and stay there during the night, or up to capacity?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
The other question was in regards to the warming shelter, because you have a lot of unsheltered people all over the county, especially they're sitting in the woods next to the enclave of Fairview. Is there gonna be, is the shuttle, is there gonna be shuttle service to get these people there, because they're all over the county? So how are they gonna get to this warming shelter, to be able to bring them there?
And Pastor Let addressed that as well, she showed me her buses, as well as she indicated she was very familiar with where we had homeless people in our community, and she would be going there to see if there was a need to address those, those people.
Commissioner Henderson.
Would the fifty thousand dollars be like once every so often, or once a month, would be a one time?
One time, but I would like for the board to take into consideration that we have something in place yearly that we know, and then we would have a scheduled date, as well as an end date for it, so we would not have to have this discussion. I think right now, we've already, we're kind of behind, we've already had a lot of cold days, so we'd rather go on forward in twenty-three, if we know October first, October fifteenth, you know, we just have a date in mind, or when the temperature drops at a certain level, I think that says in the IGA, we go ahead and put this in motion.
Thank you. So we got a motion on the floor. All in, all in favor? Any... Thank you, it passed five oh.
Chairman, we have number twenty-four. We are with Ms. Trudy Henry, the Director of Covington, Newton County nine-one-one. Covington, Newton County nine-one-one is requesting BOC approval of memorandum of understanding between Newton County and Butts County, Georgia for access to the seven-hundred, eight-hundred trunking talk groups.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here.
Good evening. How are y'all? What I'm here for is some MOUs, some memorandum of understandings between surrounding counties that are around us. We're getting to that point with the radio system that we're ready to work, well, I've been working on it for months now, but work with them and program in our radios to have mutually talk groups between each county. We're working with all of them, but I have the ones, I have Butts County, Morgan County, Rockdale County, and the state of Georgia's ready to be signed by y'all, they've already been signed by their boards, and they're ready for Newton County's signatures. I'm still working on Walton, Jasper, DeKalb, and Atlanta PD, just 'cause they're on the interstate, and public safety agencies have requested those as well, Henry County as well. So those will be trickling in hopefully pretty soon, but right now I have those four that I'm trying to get signed, so we can move forward with programming our radios.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Passed five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much. Y'all have good evening.
Thank you.
Chairman, we're at the last item as far as the agenda per se. Item number twenty-five, the discussion for Newton County Board of Commissioners, the twenty-twenty-three commission meeting calendar.
Sir. Guys, I'm gonna, one change I do want to seek now, and then we can make changes as we go through the year, but I do want to change the first meeting to the tenth, because of the way the holidays is falling, to give staff an opportunity to make sure that they get the information in that we need for the agenda. So we will have one on the tenth and seventeenth, back-to-back meetings instead of the first. Can y'all agree to that? So if we can approve that change tonight, and when we get to the holidays, we'll make changes as we come, 'cause I think the Fourth of July falls on, on the first Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. So once we get further along in, in a year, we'll make changes as we get there. Can I make, can I get somebody to make that as a form of motion, please? Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thanks.
Chairman, we are now at item number thirty-one, citizen comments.
Can we do the alcohol reading? Not all, we have to do it all at once in the county.
Item number thirty.
The renewal.
Item number thirty, which is twenty-twenty-two alcohol renewal listing, which is included in your packet.
So for those who haven't did, I don't, I think, I think you did it before, you did it before last. So what this is, I'll, I'll explain. What this is, this is where all of the stores, they send them in their alcohol license for renewal for the new year, and so we try to approve them, so they'll be able to, on the first, they'll be able to sell their alcohol. Guys, I seek a motion, please. The motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh. Thanks.
We are at the final.
Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so, please. State your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so, please. Utilize your first mic, you may come at this time.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Glenn McClendon. I'm here, I'd like to make an offer to the county for affordable housing for the homeless and the low, low income. In the process, I'd like to create a workforce to put these home together. I have a brochure here that I know, I can do it in three minutes, so I'd like to pass it out if possible, that you, so you can view it later on in your time, if you can , if possible. During the night meeting, I noticed there's a lot of homeless and people not having shelter in the city, and I have a solution that we can partner together and resolve the issue. I'd like for you to look at it, if you can put on the, during the next meeting or whatever, to have more discussion about it. It's gonna take more than three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. It's, it's been stunning, the last couple of weeks I've been faced with a couple of different, a couple of questions, both of them, and I've never faced these questions before, and I'd like to ask the county manager if he would to look into this for me, is I have the impression that single-wide manufactured homes were only allowed in local home parks in Newton County? But it seems that's not always the case, and I, I guess my ask would be, when is that not the case, and where are those places located in Newton County? I have equations, apparently, demonstrating where these, the single-wide manufactured homes may be actually very valuable homes and neighborhoods, and I know that everyone across the world, we just gotta go talk about that, but, you know, obligation also to try to uphold or maintain our property there where, where possible, in the county. And I would just like to know, mobile, single-wide mobiles manufactured homes, where are they allowed? If they're allowed at some local park, where are they allowed, the locations of them?
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now I feel bad, I'm about to talk and speak. But I, I, you know, Commissioner Mason as well, just to let everybody know, the vision for a party that was scheduled for December third, due to the election, we had to cancel it, and I know a lot of the constituents didn't want to cancel that, so we're gonna have it again, we're gonna reschedule that in January. Just also that I'm honored to be accepted by NACO for Justice Network Advancing Race Equities Program with the peer learning, so I'll be traveling, I'm the only one from Georgia that was selected, and I'll be traveling with other county officials and judicial officials as well, to learn about their inequities and their jail system and so forth, and how we can reduce that and have a better system in dealing with mental health, as well as with law enforcement. So I'm honored for that, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If I may...
You done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, I would like to thank the constituents in District Four, and the new part of District Four. You know, I am the only commissioner, I think, in the history of Newton County, who had, who at least, almost, what, four-fifth of his district was changed to another district before the, in the election, and I still, in the primary, we got sixty-five percent of the vote, and then in, in the junior election, I got seventy-two percent of the vote, and I'm just thankful, first to God, but I'm also thankful to my constituents. And one, one little girl, when we was on, on the parade route, she asked me, she said, Henderson? I said, yes. She said, God must be with you to put up with being a commissioner for six term and ask for a seventh term when we re-elected. And I told him, God loves me and he loves you too. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to reemphasize what Commissioner Mason has said, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and uplifting new year coming up. Thank you for inviting me to participate on the parade.
Thank you for coming. So, I'm not really a parade person, but it was actually pretty fun.
Now, let me get to some things.
Chester.
Mole Road and... Uh, Moat Road and one-sixty-two, is there any plans on fixing that particular intersection?
Yes, sir, I do have a concept on the, um, on the, um, a fix for that Moat Road intersection there at the, uh, at the, across from the church. Is that what we're talking about? And, um, it's a matter of, um, getting the engineers started on the PE. I can bring that to the board if that's something that the, uh, board wants to go ahead and, and move forward with.
Is that something that DOT would take care of since one-sixty-two?
Uh, I've talked with them extensively about it, they're not going to, they have done a safety, um, study up and down one-sixty-two with some other countermeasures that they're willing to do, but, but a realignment is what it's going to take and we have a concept on that, but, uh, they're, uh, they're not willing to, to put that, uh, forth as a project. We'd have to do that ourselves.
Okay.
Which I'm more than ready to do if that's something the board would like for me to go ahead and...
Okay, well, I, I'd like to see it and I don't know what the rest of it, what they want to do, but, uh, if we could get it in the road process, whatever that is, um, getting that done, so I...
It was on the, um, uh, the T-Spot program way back, but it didn't pass, but, uh, kind of put it on the back burner, but we can pu- push it back up and, and get that going.
All right, I appreciate it. Since we're doing some stuff out in Spring Grove, uh, Stan, I'm getting a lot of questions about internet service. And I know we had done something with Paladin and I don't know where that's at, can you give me an update on that?
Quick. How, how long has it deployed in, in that part of county where the whole world? Problem is, since that time, um, it, the county has been divided, the state has been divided up. We charter, uh, the, all the internet providers has, spectrum charter, uh, I don't even know what their names are. In, in fact, new counties about that. And so they're, they're going to fiber down dirt roads right now.
Okay.
Down dirt roads.
Are you...
So everybody's, everybody's county is going to have internet, either wireless or my, uh, I think I saw them on that one somebody. Is, is, is the, they're leaving, they're leaving no, no, they're coming down high road right now, so...
Okay.
So...
And all the state funds? They were, I mean, without...
Of each, uh, city, they're all government funds coming down to the state.
Okay, so... So a person near, uh, I guess the reservoir out there off Cornish Creek, um, there's no intermittent service that I'm aware of out there. What, what should I tell these people?
There, there's, there's internet service out there somewhere in a subdivision or something, I promise you. You just got to find out who that is and call them. So why, am I eligible? That, that's why I'm telling people to do, um, if they're, if they're, if they're remote out my way, I'm telling them, you know, call Paladin. But if otherwise, I'm telling them to call charter. They can't figure whoever, you know? Like in a certain subdivision, I got the one off of, uh, Fitch Road. That subdivision, Fitch Road has no internet. That subdivision, off Fitch Road does. So the, the residents of that road are working with AT&T now and get AT&T fiber for the internet. It's not a, it's going to be regulated in the industry very similar like electricity, I'm sure.
Right, that's what I was thinking it's going to be regulated, so...
It, it's just a, it, it's, it's not happening, it hasn't happened overnight, but it, I mean, they're, they're sticking fiber around everywhere and everything.
Well, I, I would think we had allowed the Paladin to utilize our towers.
Yep.
And I know that Cornish Creek has a huge water tank at the top.
I don't know if they'll use the one water tower, that's the water tower.
Okay, but I thought we, they would eventually...
They're, they're planning to build out there.
Okay, that's correct.
I could touch base with them to see if they want to do some, see if they can invest now in, uh, in another area.
Okay, because I, I, I don't know any of these people, so, um, could you maybe check on that something? Okay, thank you.
But for everybody's knowledge, Paladin is up and running.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I got it.
It was me, Chester, that had you sitting there waiting. I just want to thank you for your quick response and the reason why I'm thanking Chester is I sent the email out, the residents in District Three that live off of Jack Neely and Brown Bridge and people who travel there, they're turning onto Brown Bridge in the dark and there's been many accidents. So I just want to thank you for responding, saying you're getting on it to get those lights up quickly so our residents can be safe, so thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chester.
Yep. Um, guys, we do have a need for executive session tonight and we will not be taking a, a vote, but I do want to, um, give my little speech to thank all of you. Uh, hey, it's been a, it's been a long year and it's been a spirited year. I think that's what the word we use in, in retreat. But I do want to thank y'all, thank y'all tonight also for passing that, um, gang violence thing for the, for the DA. Um, and thank all of you who reached out to me about my, one of my family members who was, um, actually murdered right after Thanksgiving, that Friday. And we believe it was gang violence, so thank, thank y'all for that, uh, greatly appreciate it. Uh, and we do need a motion to move into the executive session. For real estate purposes. And also, congratulations to the Georgia Bulldogs. Can I get a second, please? All in favor? We do stand in the executive session.